Good evening. Time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call the special town meeting to order.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the warning?
Second.
Motion's been made to dispense with reading of the warning.
Suspecting the authority of more warning allowed.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. This time we can open the floor for nominations for moderator.
I nominate Bart Hassel.
Second.
I nominate Kevin Gunning.
Second.
Who's second and third? Kevin? Andy? Jim? Any other nominations for moderator?
I would say close nominations.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. All those who are one... Was it Bart?
Bart Hassel.
Bart Hassel to be moderator, please signify by raising your hand. Where are our...
Do your hand go to the other side?
Just know.
You need hands back up for recount?
Okay. All those in favor of Kevin Gunning in for moderator, please signify by raising your hand. Bart Hassel, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Let's see, I tell them what to do. Looks like someone knows how to moderate. It's a meeting.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bart Hassel. I'm a resident in Sunnybrook, and I'm also planning and zoning, so thank you for nominations tonight. I'm usually pretty loud. If someone can't hear me, please speak up or wave at me from the back. After confirming with the first electman, I have to give you one piece of information based on the ballot that you were handed this evening. Based on review items number one, number two, and number three were not made public for a forum as a result of not being acted on this evening. As such, those are removed from this evening's agenda, which means items four through seven are the ones we can consider for discussion and subsequent action. Following traditional rules, if we want to discuss or take any action on any of the given items on the agenda, which I will entertain from the top down starting at number four, there is a motion and a second required, so we can enter into discussion, and then that can be ended by moving on in preparation for a vote. So, that being said, I would entertain a motion for discussion of item number four on tonight's agenda. All right, if no one is willing to make a motion, item number four, as pertains to, shall the town approve the sale of the town-owned cell tower located at 47 St. 51 Unity Drive to Tower Point for $660,000 and authorize the proceeds to the proposed upgrades to Lyons Park? I will open the floor for discussion if there are questions or concerns before we get to a voting piece. Sir.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sir, I appreciate you being good to that one, we do, sir. Thank you. What are the pros of upgrades to Lyons Park? I will ask the panel up here that question, first level.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Carl, would you join us?
Shouldn't there already been a public hearing on questions before presenting at town meeting, and the purpose of town meeting is to move the questions forward?
Where would that say that in the town charter, please?
I'm asking for a point of declaration.
It's not there in the charter. The ordinances are, but these are not. One order resolved, Mr. First Level.
Thank you. There are, and has been, information available for the upgrades on Lyons Park. There's a phase one and a phase two. A phase two is what we're looking to complete the development on, to be able to go out to get specs on it. We have an inclusion of a raved stage at the back of the track. We have another... Not pavilion also near that area. There's also a splash pad and a... That's really, other than the proposed information concerning the parking area. We're going to close off the road beside us, Reservoir and Reservoir Extension, and that would make additional parking, but we're still in the phases of going out to an engineering to put that together for us. So those are the items that...
Are there other questions that we should be posed right under the floor, sir? Please come up.
Gary Stollman, Musa, Board of Finance member. Are you going after any grant money for these projects?
We continue to go after grant money.
So you can use all this money towards the project before you get any grant money?
We already have a grant bank right now that we're working on. That's why we're working on the project as a speed. The issue that, Gary, the issue is, going after grant money is not a guarantee you're going to get the grant number one.
I mean, me as Board of Finance, I have no problem giving you the balance, but you don't get. But you're allowing $660,000 right off of that without even attempting to get any grant money.
Again, we can go after grant money, Gary, but the issue is, I'd like to be able to do that without having to go back in hope that we get a grant. And the other thing is-
So what's the hurry?
The hurry would be, you're looking to put in about a million dollars' worth of items here. We can do that all in one shot without having to go-
Why?
Why?
What's the hurry about doing the whole thing at once?
Well, it could take up to five years. If you get the grants. And the other problem with the grants, Gary, are steep grants. Steep grants require a match. So if we're going after them and it gets up to $500,000, Gary, I can answer for you. I can answer if you'd like. Steep grants are for $500,000, which require a match from the town. So that's what we require, is that we go back to the town for a meeting for asking for money out of the fund balance.
And you save you $160,000.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, may I make comments on items four, five, six, and seven in order to just save people time?
Sir.
Because it's getting quite warm in here.
I understand.
All right. My name is Charlotte Stradens, Plainfield Pike. For those of you who may not have been at the budget public hearing, I did make some comments about the questions that were being presented tonight in regards to the $660,000 cell tower. There's been no public hearing or information about how we could get further revenue from this project, so it looks to me that we're looking for a short-term gain when we should be looking at a long-term recurring process. At the hearing, I also indicated that I thought it was unwise that we cut hundreds of thousands of dollars from education, public safety, and roads in order to put money into a park. There are needs and there are wants, and in my humble opinion, the park is a want when we really need public education, public safety, and roads. On item five, shall the town of Plainfield authorize proposed lease of a billboard? I am chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, we have an application pending with public hearing on Tuesday regarding a text amendment to review whether or not to modify non-conforming regulations to allow for a billboard, so at this current time, a billboard is not allowed under the planning and zoning regulations. Item six, shall the town of Plainfield approve the sale of 12122 to be earmarked for Lyons Park? Again, I say, when we have just approved a budget where we cut education and we're cutting public safety and roads, that I would think that would be an unwise use of town funds. And then lastly, shall the town of Plainfield approve the expenditure for change orders of police evidence shed in the amount of $54,310? That has gone through public hearing process with both the Board of Finance and the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is my understanding that tonight's vote on that particular expenditure would move it to a townwide referendum to be voted on. Am I correct with that?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I will call for any other questions in discussion points number four. Yes, ma'am, please, thank you.
Linda Fedora, Central Village. I have a question regarding item four. It's a two-part question. You have to agree to both parts to vote yes, or disagree with both parts to vote no. I think that it should be broken up into two separate questions. If I want to vote yes to approve the sale of the cell tower, but I don't necessarily want to go into Lyons Park. So how do we... Do I make that a motion?
So to change the question at this format, we would have to suspend voting on that question because it's invalid based on your potential motion. I couldn't allow it to go forward in its current configuration. We would actually need the motion to suspend it. We'd have to approve that motion, and then we'd get it returned back at another time.
Well, can I understand if there's a motion on the floor?
Right now, I'm not holding a motion. None was made from the floor. I'm simply proceeding with discussion as no member of the audience made a motion to move forward.
I make a motion to move the questions to paper ballot, and that everyone who's in line to vote be allowed to vote?
I have a motion on the floor to proceed. Hold on. Second from... All right, all in favor, proceed to a vote on items four through seven on the paper ballots that you've been handed.
Aye.
All opposed. Abstentions. If I could entertain the audience for just one second, I would appreciate it. So with respect to item number five, just so the room is aware, there are representatives from the prospective company that would be interested. We simply want to make it aware that if there were questions, they would be available as they are in the room. With that being said, there has been a motion made and carried to proceed to voting. As a result of that, I would ask, starting at the front, individuals to rise, come up to the two wings, use the pens on the tables to vote only on items four through seven, please. Put it in the boxes, and proceed on the outside, as the auditorium first rose, please, if you will. Has everyone... Has everyone received their ballots? Is anyone missing a ballot who was a legal voting agent to show the identification to the registers? Ma'am, you don't have a ballot. Do you please sit on the register and say a safe.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Can you please clear that everyone who's voting in the voting area on your ballot, you can register a vote, and if another one did not scribble on your ballot. It was an issue last year at a town meeting with this, and I asked the firemen to have instruction on that included in the public, so that you don't have problems telling the new recount.
So to reiterate on the point of order in this particular case, if you have a problem with your ballot, if you are unable or have some sort of issue making your mark, please do not change or make adjustments. Please sit on the registers for a key ballot. You can come right up to the table and address that right here at the center.
Point of clarification. If the caller has voted on questions one through three, does not invalidate the ballot, those questions will not be counted.
That is correct. One through three are not valid.
So the rest of the ballot is valid, correct?
Yeah, will not invalidate the ballot, to my understanding. All right. Front rows, if you please come up to my wings on my side, please vote. All right, Doc. Tell me.
I've never looked at it before.
There you go, ma'am.
Thank you.
Gorman?
I'm Nana, remember?
Hey, Ed. Hi.
Officer, how many do you know?
It's better today. I haven't sat down yet.
They recruited him on the way in. Bart?
I saw that.
For the general, I want to make a final call. Anyone who has not voted, do your votes in front now, so we can close voting.
Nope, he thinks he can stay up. He doesn't realize that they talk back that he can't hear.
Very well. Okay, I have one call. So registrars, please hold. Yes, sir. I understand why you don't listen. I apologize. Last call for votes. Is there anyone who has not voted, who checked in with the registrars? All right, first call once. Twice. So no waving arms. I declare this voting over. Registrars, you may proceed with your count. Voting is now closed.
Yeah, good registrar, huh? That's a Democrat. Sorry. I've been watching. I'm watching, Richard. I'm watching.
Alright, everyone. I have the results from the registrar. If everyone's ready. Alright. With respect to item number four, shall the town of Plainfield approve the sale of the town-owned cellphone tower located at forty-seven stroke fifty-one Unity Drive to Tower Point for six hundred and sixty thousand dollars and authorize the proceeds to the proposed upgrades to Lyons Park? There are seventeen yes votes and eighty-four no votes. The motion is defeated. Item number five, shall the town of Plainfield authorize the proposed lease of a billboard located at forty-seven fifty-one Unity Ave to Outfront Media for the agreed-upon amount annually? There are twenty-three yes votes and seventy-nine no votes. This motion is defeated. Item number six, shall the town of Plainfield approve the specific use of monies from the sale of the one twenty stroke one twenty-two Plainfield Road to be earmarked for the Lyons Park upgrades? There are sixteen yes votes and eighty-five no votes. That motion is defeated. With respect to item number seven, shall the town of Plainfield approve the expenditure for changes of police evidence shed in the amount of fifty-four thousand three hundred and ten dollars? There are seventy-eight yes votes and twenty-four no votes. This motion passes. To that extent, I have an attendant to follow. In accordance with section two dash five, other actions requiring town meetings under subsection B, as this is exceeding the amount of fifty thousand dollars, a meeting to take place, not less than seven days, but not more than fourteen days from now for a vote, uh, forgive me, not a meeting, a polling must take place. That will take place on Monday, the seventeenth. The polls will look open from six a.m. to eight p.m. at the town hall, where we are right now, only. With that recording, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion.
Motion from Audrey. Do I have a second? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Meeting dismissed. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.